Continually, he has to stop.
Oh, no, I do.
I do my duty.
Your turn?
Well, you're cutting that turf.
Because I couldn't.
Oh, no, so I'll do that. I'm not doing anything with the team.
I just got my... Be compassionate. I'm just burning.
You're just making extra work.
I'll go over there and watch you guys at your grass.
Come on over Saturday.
I have corn in the lawn chair. I'll just watch you guys at work all day. They make cookies and coffee, but they don't have a house or anything, so. Your neighbors?
We're trying to call.
We'll bring the meeting to order and we'll stand up for the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you for coming today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
This is Janet. Catch this fire.
He's standing back here.
What's up, buddy?
Um, this is what? Here, Mark France, Rachel Smith, here. Jody on the spot.
Jody is up as of work. I don't have to note on that excuse absence.
I make a motion to excuse Jody.
Second?
I have a motion and a second for excusing Jody for being late at work. I have a vote, please.
Uh, Rachel Smith, yes. Martha France?
Yes.
Rick Toll?
Yes.
Louise Estep?
Yes.
Wenzel Bay?
I understand.
Motion passes. We have the approval of our minutes for regular meeting held on March 10th through 25th.
Are the minutes due now referenced? Martha France, who had stated she felt that the council did enough for the downtown. I think it's materially significant.
What was that, Lynn?
Uh, that Martha had said she felt the council had done enough already for the downtown.
Can we pull that myself even?
Just a reminder, the minutes are a summary of the meeting. They're not meant to capture every word.
If a council member is saying they've done enough, the public should be aware, especially in an election year.
So, if there's nothing else, we'll accept them as presented. We have approval of bill for February 19th through March 20th.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills from February 20th through March 6th in the amount of $28,327.06 as well as March 7th through March 20th in the amount of $10,099.56.
I'll second it.
That's a total of $38,419.56.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Crystal, will we incur any late fees because of not passing the bills last week? Because Councilman Slevin voted no?
Um, I will have to let you know at the next meeting.
Okay. If there are fees, please let me know because I'll make a donation to the village so that the village doesn't have to incur any late fees because of a councilperson voting no.
Great, that's great, Louise. Thank you. I have a question on March 7th through March 20th. A roll salt, was that not part of the grant that we got? So, we got a grant for $60,000, is that what you said?
We got a grant for the building, for $60,000.
And then, you've got a couple stone hauling here. You've got coin trucking, $130,000, and custard stone. You bought the stone at Custard and you had Klein haul it, is that what that is? And is that for the alleyways?
Uh, Anne Burnham, yeah.
And Northwest Tree Service, $3,650 trees in Mobile West and Town Hall. How many trees was that?
It was two.
Okay. And are those trees... Well, I'll wait till your report. I'll ask you about that now. Clem, what's there?
No other questions? We'll proceed with the vote, the bills.
Allen's green?
No.
Rachel Smith, yes. Martha France, yes. Rick Toll?
Yes.
Louise Estep?
Yes.
Motion passes for payment of bills in the amount of $38,419.56 for two months. We have the application for the Grand Rapids Little League. For the Apple Butter Fest.
Pretty much same as previous years?
Same thing.
Cut and paste.
Cut and paste. I'll make a motion to approve the application for use of public property for nonprofit, the Grand Rapids Little League, for the Apple Butter Fest on October 10th to October 12th, 2025.
I'll second.
There any questions?
How much money do you raise during that event?
It varies because of participation. Um, I think we, anyone, we probably like seven. Afterbills and everything.
No other questions? We'll take a vote.
Uh, Rachel Smith, yes. Martha France, yes. Rick Toll?
Yes.
Louise Estep?
Yes.
Wenzel Bay?
Yes, but you have liability insurance, right? Okay, yes.
Motion passes. Deputy, I don't know if there was any kind of report that you might have had that you brought tonight, or...
No, sir. I'm just here for any comments or questions for the sheriff's office.
Okay. Um, we've been having some reports of speeding cars and excessively loud things, but I know that's kind of a big issue. But the fast cars that are going west side of town or coming into town on the east side, we've got some complaints about that.
Mostly 65 on Front Street?
Yes. 65 going into town from the east and outside on the west end.
Understood.
Other than that, I think everything's been going pretty smooth. Any other questions for the deputies? Well, thank you. You're also thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I really don't have much to say. I've got a little report on the committee that we're trying to put together. Nick Scott expressed an interest in being on it for, to help with the economic development.
System ability.
Yeah.
Who did this? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Um, Nick Scott, he went by outside.
Okay.
He expressed a large interest in being on it.
Good.
And he had talked to Julie Dooley, or who is it? About it also. Tried to get a couple more people. This last week had been busy with taxes and then I hurt my eye and I couldn't do much more with it. We'll be working on that as, as we can. Hopefully we can get started. That's, you know, I've got... Can we move on to your report, please?
All right. The saw storage bin is complete. We have a few defters sawed around it. It's okay. It's nice, though. They save that way. I did get a quote to take 84 trees down along the canal. Um, there's orange axes on a lot of them. Most are mostly dead or they're leaning towards the canal or over the top of it. And that's on both sides. Um, 84 trees, it's $33,000, which seems like a lot, but if you do the math, it's under $400 a tree from the cut, cut them, get out of here, which it'd be really nice to do so we're not cleaning out the canal all the time and they're not falling in there.
Who's that quote from?
Uh, his name is Joey Tree. He's at White House. Apparently he has a big crane, it's like an 80-foot crane that has like a cut, cutting thing on it so he can reach across from here, grab it, cut it, and lift it up and just set it over here, put it on a truck and get it out of here.
Great.
I did talk to the Northwest guy. He said he could do it. I just don't know if he has the equipment or something like that. He probably could drop them and then they probably could throw them around and pull them out that way. Uh, this guy just seemed to be more professional about it with the bigger equipment. I might come up with other quotes. I just, I don't know a lot of people I have that sort of capability around here. A guy did, um, from a logging company came out. I have not heard back from him. I think he came out two weeks ago on Sunday. I tried to call him today and I haven't heard back, so. I got the white GMC four, GMC pickup fixed. The back brakes were bad and the door handle was broke. About $13,000 for that, or $1,300 for that. Um, the wood chipper we sent to the Mere dealership and family to get new throttle cables, just had them go over the whole thing since last year is pretty rough on them. It's gonna be probably $1,000, $1,500 bucks, I guess, depending on what else could be wrong with it. Um, I had to get a new saw sparker motor for the big blue dump truck. That was like $671. And then the tree, two trees behind Lindsey's house, we got taken down. And it still cost a little more to get the second tree taken down. It was in the way. I really haven't been back there to look at it and kind of busy. I mean, I don't know, does it look bad? Okay, so, I mean, that's done. And other than that, it's pretty much all I got. I do have your quotes from the asphalt company. Buck Brothers for Pirates Park was just under $18,000. Rudder Belly was 26 and Morlock was 26,582, so. Behind businesses to reseal it and then add on the new. Buck Brothers was $52,000, Rudder Belly was $50,000, and Morlock was $42,000.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's to get seven parking spaces, right? I get that it's a reseal.
I mean, we could reseal it and then re-strike all lines and see if we could get more out of it, but I don't remember exactly what it was. Might have been more than seven. I don't remember exactly. But I just got the quotes that you asked for, so.
I think that was on the, um, the lot that's unapproved.
Yeah.
Also.
Yeah, the lot that's not done yet?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there could be possible room for more if you do reseal it and then re-strike it all. I just, I don't know.
Rearrange it.
So, Chad, are you waiting on more quotes for the 84 trees?
I, I can't call.
Or are you fine with the $33,000 and do any of that?
I mean, I'm fine with it. Price seems, I mean, for less important option tree, it seems like a really good price to retain. I mean, uh...
I would just like to get on somebody's schedule.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. We need to try to do that. And, oh, the concrete as well. We need to work... I mean, that was, was straighter concrete. You was at Shep's. We need to, if we're gonna do it, we need to tell him. He's gonna call him like every day.
Concrete for what?
Subworks.
Oh, good. So, I would like another quote, too, for the $33,000.
All right, yeah.
Probably sure, but I don't know that you've done business with this guy before and we should see how competitive it can be.
But if there are other options, if there are other companies that have the capability, then... You said there was one more law, like a logging company that you wanted to hear from?
Yeah, and I haven't heard back. I mean, he, I don't know what's going on with that guy. And that one company that cut trees on the Erd House, she... I did try to call him today. He said he'd give me a quote and I haven't heard back from him either.
Well, let's give it till the next council meeting and then I think we need to make a decision to go forward.
Because you, I mean, in my opinion, you've gotten two quotes and you've made an attempt for a third?
I did get other quotes from Enviro Care, but that wasn't taking down 84 trees. I think that was like six trees and I took a thousand bucks a tree.
Right.
It could be cheaper if I asked him to come back and look. I can't do that and call him, too.
Okay.
But as for the concrete, I would like to know what your thoughts are, so I can call him. Because, like I said, he's gonna call him like every day.
And what was the price on that?
Um, he was gonna, he would get us, it's like for $75,000, he would get us to Mr. Kiefer's house for his new concrete. It's about up against that.
And it's $75,000? We need to do public quotes.
I don't think we have that now in our appropriations.
Under that.
I think the quote was like $77,500.
$74,500?
It was something like that. He said he would stay under whatever the number is. And that's what Rick asked to have. I mean, we went as far as to go, but the one was, we want to stay under the...
And that was the balance of River Road.
Yep, starting there and coming all the way down and, you know, going left and then putting Mr. Kiefer's new concrete there.
And that was the lowest quote that you received?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. And he did the one in the park and he did a great job. He got it done on time and matter. I mean, K and K, they've been, concrete's been good. It just takes them forever to come back and receive, so.
What are the payment terms on that quote?
Uh, payment is done, as far as I know.
There's money upfront.
I'll have to ask him, he starts, if he wants to have it signed a contract and everything, but...
Let's not spend $74,000 upfront now, okay?
I mean, if I find that out first, you know, so I can tell him before the next meeting. It's the longer the wait, the longer the sentence.
Right. I think it qualifies for public quoting.
I think it qualifies to get it started ASAP because of the weather and the things that are coming up in towns can be poor. And it has been quoted by three different people. So, you need, you should probably make a motion on that and just get it moving through.
What's the name of the company?
Strayer Concrete.
Have you ever used them before?
Yes, you just said.
It's on insurance level.
I'll have to ask him.
I make a motion to contract with Strayer Concrete.
He can't answer all the questions.
For $74,000 for the, um... Oh, I forget which.
Area 3 and area 13.
Area 3 and area 13.
And I'll second that. And what are the payment terms, Rick?
He said he would give back with us.
So, you're approving without knowing?
That is correct, depending on the payment terms. If he wants a deposit, then we put down a deposit. But he said he would go...
Those are negotiable items.
He would go into a contract with him.
Those are negotiable items and you shouldn't be approving it together. The terms of the contract.
We have a motion.
$74,000 of the village tax dollars. You should know what you're doing.
We'll take the vote, please.
Martha France?
Yes.
Rick Toll?
Yes.
Louise Estep?
Yes.
Wenzel Bay?
No.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes for Strayer Concrete to take care of the sidewalks and areas where the...
Free interpretation.
Thank you. Anything else, Chad?
No.
Uh, I have some things for Chad. You had said you didn't know when they were gonna open the canal?
Uh, they're opening it tomorrow.
I was gonna say, I called and they said they're opening it tomorrow, so.
I just found out today, just one, I called them.
Uh, do you have enough debris out of the canal for them to do that?
Yeah, it'll flow down, but I tried as much as I could today that I could reach.
Okay, because there's quite a few right on here.
Solid, yeah.
Okay. So, then the docks will go in when?
I don't know. I haven't known until, but I just found out today they're opening.
So, within 30 days, is it reasonable?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
There's some things you're gonna have to float down through there to get them out of the way, too.
Right, actually, they don't have much debris in front of it today when I talk to them. Just try, so.
The docks might be in the way, so they won't go in until that stuff's cleared out. Crystal, move on, please.
Um, we have the third reading for the annual appropriation ordinance tonight. So, we can have a motion for passing. Also, Mr. Slevin asked me to give you some copies of interventions and you should have that back as well.
Is the prices what you want?
No.
No. They were given as examples of styles?
I think the price is gonna make a...
Contingent on that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if one is $1,000 and the other one is $5...
The prices were actually discussed in that meeting?
I don't know which one.
All of them were given to you, just wasn't captured in the meeting?
You know, you could share this information with us.
I did share the website. There are 1,000 inches on there. Those are just samples of styles.
Okay.
Why don't you get the prices for us so we can look at them?
I did give you the prices.
Do you have them with you?
No, it was already recorded. Crystal didn't put it in the meeting minutes.
Sure. Play that again.
Okay.
Thank you, Crystal. We have readings of communication, which I have nothing right now. Report to standing committees. I have nothing of that.
So, I'd like to talk about the committees, or you want me to wait till the end of business?
Um, then I'm talking.
Do you want me to wait till the end of business?
Please stay on the agenda, please.
I'm asking that I can talk about the committees.
Reading of ordinances and resolutions. We have the third reading, ordinance 2025-1, annual appropriation ordinance. That needs to be...
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-1. It's like annual appropriation ordinance. Total amount is $2,690,974.
I'll second.
Remember, annual appropriation ordinance in the amount of $2,690,974.74 per passage. A quote on that, please.
Uh, Rick Toll?
Yes.
Louise Estep?
Yes.
Wenzel Bay?
No.
Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha France?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-1 passes. We have unfinished business?
Hey, first thing I want to talk about is unexcused absences. And at the last meeting, Louise, you were not here, but I did go over what was available.
Yeah, I listened to that and I'm not sure you were looking at the right website when you're looking at the state teacher's board.
Yeah, well, I just did a Google search on, um...
I have a rice code. It's covered under that.
Actually, uh...
Me, too.
Okay. So, what it says is that in section 3307.091, that the number of regular meetings at which a board member shall be present in person for it is not less than one half. Um, I also talked to Waterville. They have a, uh, policy that says that council members can miss three per year. Bowling Green has six in two months. So, it varies widely. But what I'd like to point out is that everybody in here has missed a council meeting. But there's only one person that it's been unexcused, and that's myself.
No, we were unexcused at the last meeting.
No, they excused you.
No, we were unexcused because there wasn't proper vote. Yeah, you didn't.
They all voted for you to be excused.
Except you. Except you, so it didn't, so it didn't pass.
It didn't pass.
So, what I don't want is that the bias of this council to...
Lynn, you did not properly, when you, when you were not approved...
What I don't want is the bias of this council to influence procedure. And I don't see this council as having an attendance problem. People miss because of legitimate reasons.
As long as they get proper notice, which you did not. That's why unfortunately, we had to vote not to approve it. The other times that you missed and gave proper notice, we approved that.
What's the definition of proper notice?
You have to notify the mayor and the clerk.
And both of them, both that current system or before?
Right, and the current policy says with a reason.
And both were given reasons?
No, no one. You said ditto.
Which is a reason.
No, that's not a reason.
Okay. For which time?
Which time were you repaying?
And that was seven minutes before the meeting started?
It doesn't matter.
I see why I don't come anymore.
It doesn't matter.
Oh, wait.
You guys are trying to create a policy that impacts nothing except me. Get over it.
This is a minute ongoing.
We need a no-fault policy. This has so many occurrences and then move on. This is not what's driving the depletion of the downtown. This should not be your focus.
You were supposed to present to the council.
Thank you very much, Rachel.
When? I didn't receive it.
It was, I guess, the last meeting.
Mayor, I wasn't here.
I can't help you.
You can't send this stuff electronically, please.
Mayor, at the committee meeting in the hole, I believe Councilman Slevin asked if she could create a draft.
Yes.
And I said, yes, that would be great. I saw no draft. All I saw and heard was verbally. So, I took it amongst myself to contact Contagony, Haskins, Weston, and Bowling Green and got their attendance policies.
Great.
Okay?
Yep.
And so, this is the draft that I have created.
You're gonna have to send it electronically or it can't be accepted?
No, I, I have zero record of it. I wasn't at the last meeting.
What I have indicated is I overstruck... This is actually the, number seven is the current verbiage in our policy booklet. I did an overstrike on the things that I think should be done away with, and the highlight is new. So, what they would do is, I'll read it. "It is the duty and obligation of each council member to attend council meetings and the committee meetings of which they are members of. If a council member cannot attend a meeting, he, she should notify the mayor or clerk, giving the reason for said absence." Then it goes down to, "The mayor or clerk will let council know if notification was received during roll call. Council will then vote if the absence is excused based on notification or not excused, no notification. Three unexcused absences in 12-month period is cause for dismissal." And where I found it was not where you had indicated, but it was under section 705.13 of Ohio Revised Code.
I have a copy of it here, Louise.
I, I want to say that one of the things I did was to correct the grammar.
Mm-hmm.
On this.
Okay.
Uh, and it would be which line? So, first sentence. "It's the duty and obligation of each council member to attend council meetings and committee meetings of which they are members," period.
So, take that out, you're saying?
No, take that out. That's repeated. It's not necessary.
In the last sentence, I think it should read, "Three unexcused absences in a 12-month period is, it may be, uh, may be cause for dismissal or a councilperson may be expelled."
No, I see. Are we discussing or just listening? I think it's cause for dismissal.
Well, this all has to go through our solicitor before it gets put into our rules and regulations, so.
Well, thank you for putting together a draft, Louise.
Sure, I was very disappointed that one wasn't created after Councilman Slevin.
Gathered information is most...
So, it's simply, so it's...
Like gathered information.
No, you needed to type something up, Lynn. Verbal isn't good.
Sending it to the council.
Shouldn't have it last night.
I was disappointed that you didn't do it because you were so excited to do it. And I said, yes, please do.
So, let's talk about further disappointment and unfinished business. I asked for the rules of the committee and I was assured that they're in the meeting minutes, so I went back to the meeting minutes of this year.
February 10th.
Uh, January 13th, I asked Rachel what she wanted to accomplish. Smith said a lot of things, town hall renovations. That's her goal. On 127, John asks for projects for 2025. Uh, I asked Rachel for the town hall punch list. Still not provided.
It's been provided to you.
On February 10th, Louise in finance said that your goal is to discuss the appropriations. That's been done.
No, that is not what I said my goal was.
I'm taking that out of the meeting minutes.
Okay.
You're saying things, Lynn, up to the public, or just giving them a little twist that is not true.
Anyone should reference the meeting minutes on February 10th. Toll said streets and sidewalks, meeting scheduled, no goals. Smith said for buildings, town hall...
We just passed a goal to do area 3 and area 13.
Town hall painting and township room renovations. Martha said LED streetlights. Jody, who's responsible for safety and welfare, no goals. Jody for industrial and commercial development, no goals.
And what are your goals for the committees that you belong to, Lynn?
I'm not a chairman of the...
Doesn't matter.
You have to be a chairman.
I'm right, all the goals that I want to do.
As a councilperson, you should have goals, too.
I do.
Okay.
I need a vision statement, a needs assessment and a stra, three to five-year strategy.
Okay, good.
Okay?
Yeah, that's good.
Been consistent the whole time, Louise.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
And here are the goals for the utilities today. Number one.
So the goals are now published.
Yeah, let's not, you don't have to read them again. I already went through them.
Can we move on to new business?
Other unfinished business, we talked about, um, benches, which I'm still waiting on the quotes, but also someone had pointed out that there was two other entrances and so we were looking at additional artwork and so I have examples of that, uh, that can be handed out to the council or Crystal can distribute.
Examples of artwork for what, please?
So we were talking about a steel block letter sign at the main entrance there and then because we have an entrance off Wappa Caneta, an entrance off here, that, um, doing something else to emphasize the Grand Rapids theme and, um, as a, uh, chamber member, we've been talking about emphasizing wall eyes, so I have fish sculptures that we could, uh, put on either one of those or both those entrances with the word Grand Rapids.
There was a Grand Rapids on it. Not anything for the Apple Butter Fest that we're so known for?
No.
Okay. All right.
Any new business? Council comments?
I have a comment. Lynn, this comment is for you and I'm not asking for an answer. I just want you to think about this. Your term is expiring this year, just as mine is. And you really need to think about why you're on council. You vote no or you abstain ninety-nine percent of the time. You are very disrespectful towards employees, council and mayor. And I went through the twenty-twenty-four minutes and counted thirty projects that were completed by employees or council in spite of you voting no. So I just want you to.
Passing bills is not an accomplishment.
So, I didn't count it as an accomplishment. Okay, it's not one of them. So as your term expires, I want you to think about positive things that you have done for the people who have elected you. Because I can't think of any right now.
So lovely speech, Louise. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other council comments?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I should have a second to adjourn?
Nope.
Just so I'm sure.
No, I know they are.
It's great. Do you think I'd hear?
Louise C. Step?
Yes.
Lynn Salvein?
Yes.
Uh, Rachel Smith?
Yes.
Martha France?
Absolutely.
Rick Tolls?
Yes.
Need to give him. Are the ones you have circled on here, the ones with choices?
Uh, it's, it's not a. It's not a choice, John. It's, it's to give an idea of discussion. That's the idea of, um, metal sculptures versus a horse sculpture versus a sign.
Of course. Of course it was.
And that should be shut off.
No, it doesn't have to be.
There's a puppeteer on the shelves.
Yeah. Louise, would you like to discuss? Do you want us to figure that you're feeling outside of council?
No, I think I've said it. As a, as a resident, I'm a fool how you act, you can act like a nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.